I call the order, the city council meeting of February tenth, two thousand sixteen. First item will be a pledge of allegiance. Tonight, that will be led by Remington Dartor from Troop eleven thirty-six. Remington?
May the audience please rise? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under our, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Two. Audience may be seated.
Thank you very much, Remington. Next, communications, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one announcement, Chief Doug Diamond and Detective J.C. Holt are receiving an award from the Salt Lake Domestic Violence Coalition for their work on the lethality assessment protocol. And also Sergeant Mitch Soper was selected by the Utah Police Officers Association as Officer of the Year, along with Sergeant Bruce Shepherd, and receiving a valor award for their work on the hostage standoff on August twenty-sixth. So, Chief, well done.
Thanks. Darian?
I don't have anything tonight, thank you.
Thank you. David Oken?
Yes, just to let the council know, there was a little bit of a false alarm concerning SME Steel. That rumor's been laid to rest, and they're not going anywhere. Thank you.
We're happy to hear that, David. Brian Clay?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thanks.
David?
I don't have anything tonight, thanks.
Wendell?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Chief McRae?
Nothing tonight.
And Chief Diamond?
No, make that unanimous.
Wow. I think that's her record. Councilmember Rice?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Jacob?
At the risk of breaking the streak, I did want, I did want to give a quick shout-out to our code enforcement group. I got an email from a neighbor slash constituent resident person this last week at about eleven-thirty on a Saturday night. And so I just forwarded a quick message, because it was a code enforcement issue, so I forwarded a quick email over to Brock, and he responded at about one-fifteen in the morning, on a Sunday morning, and said, "Well, look into it." Anyway, he didn't look into it at one-fifteen in the morning, but he did respond to me and the, and the resident that quickly, and then on a, you know, got it taken care of on Monday. So, or, you know, notified, followed up, whatever it was. So I just wanted to give a shout-out to, that's real responsiveness right there for our staff.
Thank you. Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. That's not the risk of breaking the streak, that was breaking the streak. But I have nothing further, thank you.
Councilmember Haga?
Nothing, thank you, Mayor.
And Councilmember Burton?
I do, actually.
Please.
I just want to make it aware, everyone aware, that I have a city license, I actually have two city licenses, two city business licenses. My corporate name is Dirt Cats, Inc., and I have two DBAs. One is Master Electrician, that does electrical contracting. The other one is called Able Training, where I train electricians and other contractors. And the reason I bring this up is so that people are aware that I do have an interest on what happens in the city, in the licensing and building department. I don't think it's a conflict of interest, I won't be excusing myself, but I will have interest in those areas. I just wanted to be aware that I'm not going out any backdoor, I'm making it clear that I have that interest. Thank you.
Thank you. I have nothing this evening, as well. So we will move to item four, citizen comments. I have one signed up to speak. We'll go with that one first. Lenisa Bell?
Good evening, thank you for allowing this time for comment. I am here to speak to the view proposal that's on the agenda tonight. And I did attend the last meeting, I've already sent you all emails and expressed concern over the way that the development has been moving, buy-ups, et cetera. And tonight, I wanted to comment on something a little bit different, I apologize. My address is eighty-one oh-two South Pons Lodge Drive. So, today Councilman Burton posted on his Facebook page that, just roughly paraphrasing, that the council must ratify this proposal because the planning commission has already approved it. And my thought on that was just that the planning commission is not elected by or accountable to the people, the members that the council are. And it feels to me like we've lost our democratic process in, during, in the course of this event. I've heard council members here run on the platform that there would be no more high-density housing in West Jordan, and have heard political figures since this time say that we have enough high-density housing in West Jordan. The way that this process has been ushered through, it kind of creates or fosters an air of impropriety. And I'm certainly not making any allegations, but it feels like maybe we should spend a little more time, maybe we should allow a city attorney the opportunity to review the proposal, to look at the residents' concerns, to make a determination as to whether or not this complex, as it's currently proposed, will actually benefit the city. And, as I said the last time I spoke, I understand the value of commerce and of creating business opportunities and development. I'm an MBA, I completely understand. However, as a resident, I have concerns to the contrary. And as a resident speaking to my representative government, I would hope that you would all take this into consideration, and be willing to afford a little extra time to make sure that we have looked at all of the provisions of this plan, to make sure that they are in fact compliant with the city's plan, rules, laws, whatever the case may be. And that's, that's the basis of, of what I wanted to present here tonight, that I would just ask that you allow a little more time for, for the new city attorney to review this plan, to make sure that, that we are in line with the rules and regulations that we need to adhere to. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all that I have signed up to speak tonight. Anyone else wish to speak on any topic concerning the city? Now would be the time. Please state your name and address.
My name is Nicole Barnett, my address is eight zero one seven South Big Springs Drive. I would like to second what Lenisa said. I am under the impression that the previous council in two thousand six gave this current council's power away to the planning commission. And I too feel that if we can't look to the city council to make those decisions, if we, if we as a people are not happy with this, it needs to go back to the planning commission, it needs to be looked at again. And it shouldn't come back with the same, everything it's been coming back with, we need to make some changes. If this group that is unelected and is not accountable to the people continues to go forth, this WSPA needs to be looked at again, maybe go before a judge, because the people's voices are not being heard. And Peterson will just continue to develop this, this land under the WSPA, and that will be the end of the story. I think we should wait until we have an, our city attorney in position before we make any more progress with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, I will close the citizens' comments and move to the consent calendar. No one has stated they wanted anything pulled this evening? Councilmember Nichols?
Move to approve consent, I have.
I have a motion by Councilmember Nichols, and a second by Councilmember Haga. Discussion to the motion. Seeing none, let's vote.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Mayor Rolf?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Councilmember Haga?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Vote passes six in favor.
Moving on to business items. Business item six A, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution sixteen dash one-seven, confirming the appointment of David Ricky to serve as city attorney and administer the oath of office. Councilmember Jacob?
Seeing no discussion, I would be ready for motion.
That would be in order.
I move to approve Resolution sixteen dash seventeen.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Jacob, and a second by Councilmember Nichols. Discussion to the motion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Mayor Rolf?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Haga?
Yes.
The vote passes six in favor.
Do you all like to go down?
Okay, who do you have, Scott?
Uh, Scott. Hey, raise your hand if you have anything. I am stating, you saw this far, that I support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
Constitution of the City of Utah.
And the laws and ordinances.
Laws and ordinances.
Of the City of West Jordan.
City of West Jordan.
And I will discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
Congratulations. Let's see a signature.
Business item six B, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution sixteen dash one-eight, confirming the appointment of a council member as a voting member of the Salt Lake County Council of Governments. And I'll open the floor for nominations in just a moment. I can't tell you how important this position is. As a voting member of the Council of Governments also gives us a vote on the Wasatch Front Regional Council, which I also served on. So we get two votes, and both of them decide very many things. So, I know there's a few that are interested, so anyone that would wish to nominate someone, or theirself, if that's... Councilmember Jacob?
I would go ahead and nominate Councilmember Burton for the cog.
I would second that.
I nominate Councilmember Rice.
I'll second that. You have a vote. Any more?
Mayor?
Yes.
Can I make a statement? Can I make a statement?
Sure.
Currently, I am on, it doesn't show on our list right now, but I'm on the Salt Lake County Association of Municipal Councils. And it's my understanding you can't serve on both at the same time. And because I would really like to stay on that one, I am willing to, I will be voting for Councilmember Burton.
Okay, and if there's no others that are nominated, we will, let's... Yeah, Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor.
Can I make a comment, though, Mayor?
Yes, who's, Councilmember Nichols?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to make this statement, as I understand, just to make sure everybody's clear on that. And also, this is for the public, the mayor serves, that's not up for debate and discussion. The mayor serves in the cog, that's one of our seats, and what we're discussing is the second seat. But each of those seats also has to have a designated alternate. And I would like to be, is that going to be part of our discussion? I guess that's my question. Well, I was gonna do that next.
Okay.
I'll just wait, because I was just gonna say, I'd be interested in that. And I would just say, if we move forward with Dirk Burton and my application.
Okay. Councilmember?
Yeah, just, also...
Is that a motion, then?
Yeah.
Okay.
For me. And I will second that. Now, discussion to the motion, Councilmember Haga.
Since I've been an alternate on cog for a while, I, I just, I've noticed that cog, which is going to be chaired by Mayor Freeman, Mayor, they've changed the time from twelve to one during the day. So, you need to make note of that, and change that in our schedule.
Yeah, that's important. It is from twelve o'clock to one-thirty, which is a different time than it's been.
Okay.
And Wasatch Front Regional Council will only be at two o'clock, out at their facility, at the International Center.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Nichols, and a second by Mayor Rolf. Discussion to the motion, seeing none, let's vote.
Councilmember Haga?
Yeah.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Rolf?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Vote passes six in favor.
Councilmember Haga? Oh, I thought you were...
No, I was just...
We only have one volunteer to serve as the alternate.
I, I will, there's a, as an alternate alternate?
You're gonna force a vote, aren't you?
No, it's the second alternate seat. Did you say we need two alternates?
Two alternates, okay.
Okay. I, that's what I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I thought we needed two alternates. If we need two, then I'll be one.
We've only had one in the past, but we'd be glad to have both of you serve.
Okay, which one is that?
Yes. We don't need, do we need a vote on that? Thank you. Business item six C, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution sixteen dash one-nine, confirming the seventeen-acre site that includes the existing public works facility and seven-plus acres to the north as a site for the new public works facility. Jim, ready?
Mayor and council, this is a follow-up from the strategic plan meeting, where we gave everyone just a little bit of a history regarding the public works facility, where we have over the last probably seven years, looked at different sites. And six years ago, hired an architectural firm to do some programming for us, and to determine where might be the best possible options. We looked at that time about four different options. And in the course of the last six years, we've discussed quite a bit with the Salt Lake City Airport Authority of swapping some land with them. In our last meeting with them, it was determined that it was going to be a long, drawn-out process to swap that land. And we came back to the strategic plan with an option where we already own the land now, and we could proceed much more quickly with a new public works facility. And so that's what this option for us tonight, for you to, to secure that site, make the formal vote, if you will. This gives us seventeen acres in which to build a new public works facility. We will be able to build it right next to the existing facility, and keep the existing facility in use until the new one is completed. And the location of this makes it ideal, because it's centrally located within the city. And the infrastructure is already there, power, water, sewer, everything is there, as opposed to some of the other sites that were looked at over time. And so with that, we are asking staff, I should say, is asking for the final approval from city council, in which case, if it's approved, we will move forward with a RFP for an architect, and a construction manager, general contractor, to propose on these, on this particular site for a new facility.
Councilmember Haga?
Yeah, you know, I, excuse me, I toured the facility out there that we have now, and I was concerned, you know. I, I saw one of our most, more, most expensive, I think, vehicle in the city, which is our ladder truck, maybe not, I don't know. But chimney rigged, so we could service it, change the oil, and some other things that I just observed from my layman eyes, you know. And in, in the current events, just recently, we heard about a person losing their life from, you know, in a bakery or some kind of restaurant in Sandy. And, you know, building this facility, we need to do it. And I think that facility we have now, they're walking all over each other, and we need a facility where we can service all our vehicles, you know, for one, besides storage and other things that I've seen out there. So, I'm a proponent of this, I, we own the property, I'm studying the budget, I think we have sustainable funds to bond on this. So, just a comment, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion. Councilmember Rice?
Thank you. My request had been to be able to look at these other options that have been looked at, potentially in a closed meeting, where we could have a frank discussion. At the end of the day, this may be, may very well be the best spot. But I would like to make sure that I've been thorough, as well. And I know that Councilmember McConaughey would really like to do the same, and look at potential other sites, just in case, just to be thorough. So, I would personally prefer if we table this until the next meeting, when he would be able to be here and participate in the conversation. Thanks.
Councilmember Nichols? Thank you, Mayor. I want to echo what, what Councilmember Haga mentioned, in that it's, it's really important that we get this, this building, we move in that direction. With that comment, just the real brief history is, I just want to express publicly, that we have looked at the piece to the south, which obviously didn't work out. And now we're on the north. I just want to make sure that we put it in the right place. And this place is a good place, in my opinion. But I just wanna, I just want to make sure that we look at all other possibilities in the immediate area. I, I completely agree with what, what Jim has stated, in that it's, the location is central to the city. I would really like to just see if, because I don't think we've looked yet. Maybe we have, and that's why I'm kind of posing this, it's kind of, it's gonna end up in a question, Jim, so be ready for that. I'm not convinced that we've looked for properties for sale within the immediate vicinity. In former discussions, I don't know if we've been down that avenue, I don't recall that. I just want to make sure we're covering those bases, because specifically, what I, I would be interested is, is considering the acquisition of property, merely because if this piece of property is a park, it's a current, existing, using, useful park. And what we're talking about is basically tearing that down. And further, the implication would be, in this corner, if we're gonna tear it down, it has some strong commercial possibilities, where we could do other things. If that's what we're gonna do, if we're just gonna tear it down, then we might as well look at those avenues. So, what I'm, the long roundabout question is, have we looked at other properties specific to see if there are owners who are willing to sell, that would match the city's requirements within the immediate vicinity? I'm saying maybe between Bangor and Forty-Eighth West, and maybe Seventieth South on the north side, and Ninetieth South on the south side, kind of in that area, which is the central heart of the city, geographically.
To answer your question, yes, we did. We even looked at what was then the eighty-four lumber site. That was a twenty-acre site. And we lost out on that opportunity. It was purchased by others. We looked at other properties that the city does own, some of which was declared surplus recently, that just west of the airport. We also looked at another site on the soccer complex, which was up in the, would be the southwest corner, across the street from the bus barn. We looked at that site as well. And trying to stay centrally located, we could not come up with any others that would be conducive to a twenty-acre approximate site that was available for us. So, that's, we feel like seventeen acres is enough. We get less than that, then it's gonna be difficult to do what needs to be done on that site. One of the things we're trying to do is to project out to the city build-out of a hundred and sixty thousand roughly people. And we want to have a facility that will accommodate all the needs of public works at that point in time. So we're not coming back in ten years and saying, "Oh, we need to, we need to add to it, because we just didn't build it big enough." So to answer your question, we have looked at, to try to find other sites centrally located that would work, and none have been identified.
Mayor?
Yes?
In the months that I've been here, before I got here, we were looking at, you know, the Recreation Center, plus this, both on purchased property. And when it became apparent that we really needed both buildings to move forward with both, you know, purchasing property became onerous. And if you look at even a minimum of a hundred thousand dollars an acre, you're looking at one-point-seven to duplicate this someplace. And then, of course, the recreation facility, we were looking at a piece that would have cost us money as well. So, the money was an issue, and the fact that this is centrally located. Our current building is the corner that falls in the, the new runway protection zone, as Chad knows. When we do this, duplicate this to the north, none of the building will be on that. So, we'll be good with the FAA, and some of the facilities to the north of our current structure will remain in place. So we're just flip-flopping where the building is, and we'll be able to save money that way, too.
One of the other things I wanted to mention, too, that I didn't, is that the dump station that we built about three years ago would remain, we would not need to replace that. Couple of years ago, we built a new metal building for the, putting together the garbage cans. That building could also remain, not have to be moved. So, there's some other aspects of, of keeping this site here that is beneficial to us, and help us, the city save, save some expenses.
Okay. And, and I appreciate that, and thank you for the reminder, because I do recall the eighty-four lumber and such. And I guess maybe I'll slant the question a different direction, is have we approached landowners in the area who weren't actively selling their property, to see if they're interested in selling to the city?
We have not. We haven't even taken a look at what might be available size-wise, and who owns that. We have not done that.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Jim.
Mayor? Councilmember Burton?
Couple of questions, if I may. How many acres is that on currently?
Ten.
Ten acres, so we are almost up on it. And by looking at this picture, is that going north, or adding?
Correct.
And what is the distance from seventy-eight to where that property lying, or that line is?
I do not have that distance, what, what that is. There's two more soccer fields to the north, and a tension basin right on the corner, up there. On the other side, there's a parking lot that's right to the north of the north line, so there's a parking lot, and then more fields. So, it's a pretty good distance from the corner still.
Okay, good. And how many fields will that be taking over?
Two fields.
Two fields. Thank you. That's all? That's all?
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. I, I have to say, I think I'm in agreement with councilmember Rice and councilmember Nichols, who, I'm, I'm just not quite convinced that we've looked at all the options yet either. And, and granted, I'm new here, so maybe, maybe more options have been looked at than I've been able to look at, but I'm being asked to make a decision, so I'd, I'd like to look at them, if that makes sense. Specifically, the city owns a, a property, and I can't get the map to pull up, and I'm trying to get it to pull up, and I'm trying, not more prepared, over on Welby Park Drive, right, which is just on the other side of the soccer complex, I don't know if this is the lumber site that you're talking about. But it's, it's a site that was mentioned to me in, in conversations I've had with a couple other people, that the city already owns. And I haven't heard pros or cons on that site. It seems to be as centrally located as this. It goes out north on, to where Airport Road comes into New Bingham Highway. It's less than half a mile from here as the crow, as the crow flies.
We don't, we don't own that property. City does not own that property.
Okay, there's, there is a parcel that the city owns that I found on the map, I just...
It says West Jordan LLC, or something like that?
Yeah.
It's not West Jordan City.
I see. Maybe we should get that updated.
All right, thank you.
Other questions for Jim? Okay, thanks, Jim. Turn to the council for discussion. No one else? You know, we've been discussing this public works facility for seven years. We discussed it at length at the strategic plan, and for seven years, we've, in my opinion, had a less than adequate facility, and we're gaining more fleet every day, and to put this off is not the right thing to do. I think that we could find other places to purchase, but at the cost of the facility that we're going to build, based on the preliminary numbers, adding another couple million dollars to the cost of that wouldn't be something that I'm in favor of, when we have property that we already own, and we won't have to dismantle buildings that have been constructed in the last few years. We can utilize them. I think it's, would be wisdom to finally move on this after seven long years, and the bonding climate is favorable, land is ours, we could get this going almost immediately, at least the design. So it would be my recommendation that we move on this. I believe that this council and former councils have discussed it enough, so with that, I'd make a motion that we adopt resolution number 16-19 in all of its entirety.
Second?
A motion by Mayor Rolfe, and a second by councilmember Haga. Discussion of the motion. Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. I like everything that was just said. I, I mean, I don't have a huge argument against it, other than it was just a few weeks ago in our strategic plan, we were going in a completely different direction until just a couple of weeks ago. That was where we were, and it was presented to us in a, in the open forum, a strategic plan that was a complete 180 from what we were going in. And what that was, is we were going to go to the south, and it was presented to us in an open meeting that, for the first time, this was just a few weeks ago, that it wasn't possible, and this is where we're going now. And that was all decided upon outside of council input. That's where my frustration is right now, is we haven't had the input into saying, what other options are out there now? I don't want to postpone this, you know, until, I don't want to postpone this three months, six months, or anything like that, but what I want to just know is that last question that I asked Mr. Rice, which was, have we looked actively at other, I just want to see the financial feasibility of whether we can afford to purchase land and build something in the immediate vicinity without destroying this park. Two issues, I already brought up the commercial issue. If we, if we build here, there's commercial viability down the road, if we're just going to build something there, we might as well sell it and make some money, and be able to afford to build the next building. Now, the financial feasibility, we could look at that of a new site, because Jim really brought up some good arguments. We've got existing structures that we can build upon by building here, and I like that, I really do. But I'd like to see that on paper, to see if, if it would, I mean, to me, it might be overwhelming, this is absolutely the right place to do it. But I, in my mind, I haven't seen that argument yet, and that's, that's all I'm asking for. Let's just, I'd like to go down to the, to the landowners in the immediate vicinity, see if any of them are interested in selling, maybe someone's trying to get out a good deal just to get away. Anyway, that's just the, I, I'd be against the motion, just along those lines.
Councilmember Rice.
Thank you. I, unfortunately, I feel like I would be against the motion as well, for the same reason that I would like to just give it a couple more weeks. I would hate to see this fail, because we pushed too hard too fast. When I do want to see us work on this, I agree with everything Mayor said, but can we just get a couple more weeks? That's all I'm asking. Thanks.
Thanks. Councilmember Burton.
Haga's ahead of the actually.
Oh, councilmember Haga.
Thanks, Mayor, appreciate it. You know, actually, I've been on council for two years, and this is probably the fourth time this has come before us, and, you know, I, I can get those specifics to you, but we've gone back and forth as far as whether it was the soccer fields, which are an issue, so therefore we decided, let's try to get the land to the south. That didn't work out, and we have looked at other locations, from my, you know, limited conversations with staff, but as, as a council at large, I, you know, this serves my whole area. This is, I don't know if we have a map of our city and a location where this is, but this is in the heart of our city, which means that our crews can go out equally with fuel, it saves on fuel, energy. There's so many pluses as far as the location, other than one thing, and I think that's the political question, is the soccer fields. But I think of those of us that have been on council, understand that we have other property, really actually, to the north, that's more conducive to soccer fields, especially considering Forty-Eighth West is almost, I mean, it's dangerous for the kids to be out there. But, you know, we're, the, the, the main, my main reason for pushing this forward now is safety. You know, our number one priority is the safety of our, our staff and our residents. That's why we're here, to supply the services. And where our services are actually coming from are from that building. And we need to protect our employees that are on there, and frankly, really, I'm, I'm not sure if government's regulated by OSHA or whatever, but frankly, talking to people in this kind of business, this is a dangerous building, and it, it looks like a stealth bomber in a, in a way, that's the building that they actually get to work in. We, we need a, a future building that will serve our residents for the next 50 years, and that's what we're talking about doing here. Centrally, centrally located still, even with all our growth on the west side, that we can service our, our residents, and keep the safety that our employees need. And, you know, I support the city manager in thinking of these things, and that's why I'm a proponent of this motion. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Burton.
Thank you. I went over there, looked at the location, and I don't know what that distance is either, but it is a pretty good distance. And as I looked at that, I'm thinking if the business wants to go across there from Seventy-Eight, I can see there's adequate room for businesses to be there, and I think closer to Seventy-Eight would be better for the business, as you go down Forty-Eighth, it seems best, less business inclined. So I don't think that would be an issue. I thought it was earlier, so I went out and looked at it, and I think that, that we're good with that there. I like the idea of reusing some things and adding on to there. I don't like the idea of losing a couple of soccer fields, so I like, want to make sure we keep soccer fields going somewhere else, especially if we lose the others, that we keep soccer for our, our kids in the city. Thank you.
Let's vote.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Haga?
Yes.
Mayor Rolfe?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
No.
Councilmember Rice?
No.
Councilmember Nichols?
No.
Vote fails three to three.
Item 16.
Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wondered if we could just direct staff, just, I mean, for me, I'd just like to give them that, I'd be willing to support this, as long as I know that there's nothing else out there. That's really just that last checkmark I'd like to, to mark. I, I know this is important, I just want to make sure we've done our due diligence, that's it. And I'd just like to see if council's willing to direct staff to, to look actively at the landowners in the immediate vicinity, to see if any of them are willing to sell. And it might just be that it's just too expensive, and it's absolutely unrealistic.
You'd direct staff?
I mean, is, is there any opposition from the council if we have staff do that? Thank you.
Item 16, reconsideration of ordinance 16-10 regarding 5600 West, 8200 South, ratification of planning commission approval of the preliminary development plan, established density, MFR and HFR zones, review at 5600 LLC. Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. I brought this back for reconsideration, because as I looked over the situation, and I've gone out there and looked at the location, and I've listened to what the developer has to say, what the residents have to say, and I agree that the residents should have some say, and their point is valid, and they should have some rights to give their points on there. And I think the developers also should have some rights, and be able to have their points validated and going. And as I read through what the developers have done, is I looked at the requirements that the city has put upon them for them to do, true, maybe they didn't go beyond what was required, they did meet the requirements, there's a couple of spots where they went below requirements. So I see that they, developers, follow the law that they were given to them here in the city of West Jordan. And as I looked at that, I'm having a difficult time trying to find why we should not let them do what the laws in West Jordan permit them to do, as the property owners and students do that. So for that purpose, I've asked if we can look at this one more time, and bring that back, and discuss, and hold on it again.
So you're going to make the motion to reconsider?
Yeah, so I move that we reconsider this.
Second?
Thank you.
We have a motion for reconsideration by councilmember Burton, and a second by councilmember Haga. Discussion of the motion. Let's vote.
Mayor Rolfe?
Yes.
Councilmember Haga?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
No.
Councilmember Nichols?
Sorry about that. Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
No.
Vote passes four to in favor.
Okay, we will turn back to the council to consider ordinance 16-10. Councilmember Rice.
Thank you. I first want to give my deepest gratitude to our staff, who have been very patient and helpful as we've been dealing with this. I'm sorry if I've been a pain. What I've come to realize is that our staff's done a good job of trying to work within the WSPA ordinance, and what I've come to realize through that is that the issue is the WSPA ordinance. Our staff has done the best they can do under the circumstances. But I've been looking at state home...
Councilmember Rice? We had something come up, and can, councilmember Nichols needs to take a break for just a moment, it's something that has to happen. I apologize to, thank you all. I'll return you to the floor.
Really, and I apologize. We received an email from staff today at 4:00 regarding this issue. I have not had the chance to, to read it, because I was in the water board meeting. I'd really like to recess for 10 minutes, give me a chance to catch up, because this is really important, I just want to make sure we do that.
Great.
So I move to recess 10 minutes.
Second. We have a motion by councilmember Nichols, and a second by councilmember Jacob. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 10-minute break only, please.
Finally, you can get some down. Good luck, David. Great job. Did a great job.
I call the city council meeting back to order and Councilmember Rice, you have the floor.
Aye.
I'm sorry we had to interrupt you.
Thank you. So what I was saying is that I've come to realize that the issue isn't legal analysis, this and that, with, within the WSBA ordinance, it is the ordinance itself. And so I spent some time in the Utah Code. One of the problems I have with this ordinance is it takes away the legislative body's power over development and gives it, almost holds out to the Planning Commission. Essentially, we're replacing the Planning Commission on this and I can't believe that. So I went into Utah Code in two thousand and five, so before the WSBA ordinance, uh, ten nine eight three oh two, Planning Commission powers and duties, they have one, it says, the Planning Commission shall make a recommendation to the legislative body, and then it delineates it from there. It doesn't say they get to replace us. That's from two thousand and five, before the WSBA ordinance. Now also, Title ten, chapter nine eight, part eight, section eight oh one, under the Municipal Land Use Development Management Act District Court Review, it gives the district court the right to essentially overthrow this ordinance and I think that's what needs to happen. I think no matter what, we're looking at a situation where this is going to go before a judge. And that would be my recommendation that we move in that direction to try to nullify through a judge the WSBA ordinance, thank you.
Councilmember Haga?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I did, I want to state one thing that I didn't get, the whatever legal opinion was submitted and would appreciate next time that, for those of us that have regular jobs and have to come to council at five, that maybe we have this brought to our attention before we show up. But anyway, I am a proponent of this because, and I voted for it last time, because it's about economic development. You know, I understand, I really do, what it's like to be a house in the middle of a field, because I've lived here thirty-eight years. But I also know what it's like to have developers come and want to develop their property. And, and I've been in positions where I've been at that podium and talked to the council about making changes and in my neighborhood. So I understand both sides of the story, but as far as the city as a whole and especially the west side, this is a good development. I know you're going to see it from your backyard, I know it's high density, but from my perspective, I don't see anything else out there that we can put there. We are planning some major low-density areas out there, but we do need rooftops. And when, when I say that, it's about economic development for me. I didn't run necessarily on high density, I ran on the fact that if you bring people and you bring businesses to our city, our city will grow financially. And our duty as seditaries, that's where the revenue comes from, property tax, sales tax, and where those funds go is to service to the residents as a whole. So economic development is my position, I think it's a good development and it's going to bring prosperity and income to the city. Thanks, Mayor.
Other comments? I'd just like to make a comment that this is zoned, for what it's zoned for and it's been zoned that way for a long time. I don't know that it's zoned exactly right, but that's the zoning that was on the property that was at this particular location as part of the WSBA. I've never been a fan of more high density in our city, but I don't believe in taking property rights away from those that have the property. I don't know adjacent to a future freeway. I don't see it being a single-family resident, I think that those that set the zoning probably took that into consideration. The prior council did put a moratorium on, twice, on more multifamily in our city and we do have a new cap and grade system in place that helps, but this predates that so this is grandfathered in. And I don't believe that postponing it any longer would be the right thing to do.
Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I would, I want to entertain the idea of the council. Would the council entertain the, let me just make the motion to suspend the rule specific to ask the developer, I have one question to ask. I'd like to allow them to approach us and I'd like to ask them a question, but make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilmember Nichols and a second by Councilmember Haga. Discussion of the motion. Councilmember Burton?
If we suspend the motion? If we suspend the rules till the developer speak, should we also include it to let one or two residents speak as well?
Are you asking for personal privilege to ask one question to the?
It's more the, it's an informational gathering question, I'm trying to ascertain something. I, I, yes, that's what it is. Personal privilege, I'd like to just ask the developer question.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion? Let's vote.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember Haga?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Roll?
Yes.
Vote passes six in favor.
Thank you.
Spokesman for the developer come up with one question?
It's relative towards, uh...
Could you step to the microphone so that we can get it recorded?
Sorry, I apologize. The question is specific to the buildings in the MFR zone. There's one building, well, you've got the two buildings that are adjacent to fifty-six-hundred West. And what I am curious to know is if the developer is interested or would be willing to consider moving that an additional five feet to the west. All right, thank you.
Do you get that on recording? Okay. Okay, council? Councilmember Burton?
If I may add a personal privilege as well, I happen to know there's a resident who didn't get here in time for the public comments that would like to make a comment. We may enable her to make her comment at this time.
We have a motion by Councilmember Burton, a second by Councilmember Haga. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you, my name's Shelley Turnbow. I'm way outside my comfort zone. I did not make it around time due to traffic. The only thing that I wanted to say is, um, last week, or last month, I said that a few times, last month, Councilwoman Jacob set a proposal out and that I think followed the law. It still gave the planner all of the points that the Planning Commission approved, it just looked at it a little bit differently. It's different, but I don't think it's wrong. It's, it follows the law. I was curious if we could send that back to the Planning Commission or if you guys could vote on that because it, it doesn't violate the law. The next thing that I would like to say is, somebody last month, one of you guys, said that this was a difficult situation, it was a lose-lose, nobody is going to walk away happy. I said this also last month when I talked, I think it sounds like an awesome development. I, if I was younger, maybe I'd have one over there. But, but anyway, back on point, I think that it, right now, is a lose-lose, but I honestly think it could be tweaked a little and be a win-win. I think you could still get your rooftops, I think that the residents could still feel a little bit more comfortable with having maybe a three-story complex not looking right down in their backyard or maybe moved a few feet back. I think that this could be a win-win. I think it could be a win for the planner, they could have the renovation or any of that, and it could be a win for the residents and it could be a win for West Jordan. Right now, it just needs to be tweaked a little bit and I'm just asking that you guys allow that to happen. This is a permanent, I guess, project or facility, I would hate to make a mistake right now on that. Let us maybe make it a win-win. I think that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Back to the council. Councilmember Burton?
I, I move that the council ratifies ordinance ten dash sixteen?
Sixteen dash ten. Sixteen dash ten.
Oh, sixteen dash ten, sorry, my computer fell asleep.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Burton and a second by Councilmember Haga. Would you consider a friendly amendment moving the buildings in question away from the street by five feet, as stated that the developer would do that?
Yes, I will.
Will you accept that friendly amendment? We have a motion and a second. Discussion of the motion, Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. An interesting point's been brought up by Councilmember Rice tonight and it's got my head really spinning now. Let me set that aside for a moment and just talk about, I don't want to rehash everything that I said last council member, or last council meeting because you've all heard that, perhaps not everybody in the audience today, but it was stated earlier that this is a high-density project next to a lower-density, that's not the case, actually, medium-density, not high-density. It is higher-density and I can validate that, but it is a medium-density project. For me personally, the economic development means nothing on this particular project. It is a piece, but that's, that's not weighing my decision one way or the other. For me, it's, it's, it's all about the process of us setting the densities and the WSBA. As has been stated, they are vested in the WSBA, this project is. This project is. I say to this last council meeting, and I will again, I dislike the WSPA, and that's why I was wanting to vote it down. I didn't want it anymore. But this is vested, and so we are obligated to move forward within its realms. Now, Councilmember Rice brought up this argument that perhaps there might be some issues with that, and so it's got me at a pause, and I, I really don't know by just stating code, state code, whether that is substantiated or not, because I know I've personally misinterpreted state code before, so I don't know which way to go with that. Two valuable pieces that I have, that I see in this project is it's very unique in the public access to the HOA area. You're going to have an HOA that's going to permit the public to come on and use their property. Very unique, and I perceive that as valuable. Number one, no city maintenance, which is where we're hurting, and you've all heard me rant about that for a long time, and about how our maintenance of our, our public infrastructure is hurting. And this is, you have a developer who's wanting to do that piece and allow the public on. Now, we do know that it's not going to be free access. I know expressly they told me the public won't have access to the pool, but they will have access to these other amenities, the trails and the parkour course. I'm really excited about the possibility. But five feet to me is a big deal, because when you look at the grand scheme of things, that's, you know, that's a few percentage points further in distance. Yes, I, I can concede that I think it could be better. I don't love the project, but I think I can live with it. And anyway, I, I would, at this point, I would support the motion, and I'd just make a comment that I'd really like to see legally as we move forward, that we at least have legal review for, and you see the attorney, he can take a peek at that and see how the WSPA is, how that is impacted by a comment that's been brought up by Councilmember Rice, because we still have other developments that fall underneath the WSPA as we move forward, and we need that decision. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Discussion. Let's vote.
Councilmember Burton.
Yes.
Mayor Ralph.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob.
No.
Councilmember Haga.
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols.
Yes.
Councilmember Rice.
No.
Vote passes four to two in favor.
Business item 6E, discussion and possible action regarding rental fee for the Rodeo Arena. Councilmember Burton.
I've got two different things lumped into this one, which brings the reason for the fee change. The, the first one I want to talk about is the, the fee change. You receive that in your packet. Basically, what that does is it makes it so people who use the arena on weekends or holidays will pay a higher rate than they would if they used on regular days. And the reason I think this is important is because we pay staff to be there on weekends and holidays, and we give them the extra funds, the overtime in order to be there, and we're not collecting that from the people who are using it. So I think that's appropriate to do that, and we're keeping it in there to look at the schedule. We still put the discounts for the West Jordan youth groups and nonprofit organizations to keep that in line. The regular rates will still be the same. And then, in addition to that, one of the big concerns on the arena has been the audio. Many residents have brought this up and complained about this. So, as I've met with staff, they've come up with some good ideas, and I selected the ones I like, and I did send you email copies that earlier in the week, but I'd like to read over those quickly if I may, Mayor.
Go to the floor.
Thank you. Number one is have one sound contractor the city works with. All rentals needing sound will need to use the sound contractor and pay the city for services used. This would be expense revenue neutral since whatever they charge is what we collect. Our city facility use policy does not require any sound mitigation or modifications. Staff currently has a sound RFP ready to be posted and sent. It can be changed to include additional possible events. Number two, keep special event rentals using any sound or public address systems on weekends and holidays, that'd be Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Our current facility use policy does not regulate when sound can be used. This would be a new addition to the area facility. This is a scheduling issue that can be managed by staff. Number three, change the facility hours of West Jordan Arena to be closed at or before 8:00 PM on Sundays and weekdays, which would be Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Sunday. Our current facility use policy is that park closes 11:00 PM. Number four, add to the facility use policy all, I'm sorry, use policy, that all sound in the arena needs to comply with Salt Lake Valley Health Department regulation. Unamplified sound, amplified sound in any direction will be kept at 90 decibels or less, and if that is violated except for special permission events like fireworks or something where they get special permission to, to go above 90 decibels, if they violate that, there would be a fine, fine issue. And the sound contractor would be responsible for keeping those within their limits that we prescribe.
I have apologized to the council on it. My computer didn't work. I could just get the agenda item here, but, you know, I wanted to just concur with my district council member and his leadership here, you know? We, we sat down, and I, it was his meeting, and we heard from the residents, and, you know, from one of the residents that lived the closest to the arena, some of the people that lived more south and further away heard more of the noise. So it is an issue, how, and I think Councilmember Burton is probably correct as far as it's who's actually in charge of the sound, and that is a great conclusion. I think we had unanimous of our residents saying that would be a solution. So I support that. As far as the fees, I, I think we have to go to a public hearing to change these, but they look good to me, so I'll wait to see if public comes and talk, if the public comes and talks about it. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick thing I wonder if we could also throw in with this. If, if staff's time is one reason that we're changing the fees, what other city facilities are there that we also rent out on weekends or whatever that, that might also apply to? I, I don't know. Again, I'm the new guy, but I imagine there are other facilities or other rentals or other things that we allow the public to do that require staff time on time that normally wouldn't be working, whether that's Pioneer Hall rentals or whatever other things there may be that may also need to be rolled into this. I'd just like to throw that out there for consideration. Otherwise, I think it's great idea.
And I don't know the answer to that. We have to ask staff.
So would the council agree that we would direct staff to look at this, bring it back to us for a future council item and discussion? I know we're under probably the next council meeting because we're at the point that those different organizations are trying to rent the facility currently.
They are, so I would like to move forward with the arena, and then we can add the others in there afterwards as we see fit, because the arena right now is not being rented because we put a stop on that last fall, and I think we need to open that stop. So I would move that we approve the fee changes requested and direct staff to make all proposed changes to this fee schedule, and also direct staff to come back with the fee schedule for other event rentals that we can prepare at later time.
I believe we have to have a public hearing, okay?
Yes.
So it still has to come back as an agenda item with the fee schedule on it, and we'll have to have a public hearing on that item.
Can we go ahead with the sound ordinance, because that's policy that would need to have the public hearing on there, and proceed with that and have the rental open again that they can begin renting?
Well, it's kind of divided because you have, the sound policy has a fee attached to it.
It does. So I think we have to look at it globally. Would that be your opinion, Arianne?
The facility use policy has a city manager approval authority, so if it doesn't affect a code provision, then it can be changed under the discretion of the city manager. We do right now charge for services, but that part of it, to charge for the sound contractor would have to go into the list of services that we charge for. So if it was the part of the sound contractor that was the decibels or right, then it can be approved by the city manager. If it's the part where we're charging for the service, then we would have to come back to the public hearing and put it in the fee schedule.
Okay, so let's do this then. I would move to approve that we amend the policy to adopt the hours that are prescribed and the sound contractor as described, and permit staff to again start reserving the arena.
Second. Yeah, that would be it. We have a motion by Councilmember Burton and a second by Councilmember Haga. Discussion of the motion. Continue. Seeing on this vote.
Councilmember Rice.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacob.
Aye.
Mayor Ralph.
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols.
Yes.
Councilmember Burton.
Yes.
Councilmember Haga.
Yes.
Vote passes six in favor.
Final item on the agenda, prior budget discussion by myself. Could you please pull that up? Please. Councilmember Nichols was nice enough to put this together for us last council meeting, and he used the figures from, I assume, staff giving from the CAFR showing deficit spending, and with all the red ink on the page, I think it actually frightened some of the residents that we were really following a trail into the hole. So if you could flip to the next page, I, I just wanted, first of all, I'd like to state that as a council, we have no greater responsibility to the citizens of West Jordan than watching the entire budget and how funds are spent. I gathered this information from the basic forms using archived financial, final adopted budgets and comprehensive annual financial report, and I broke it down to the basic, just the projected revenue in the budget, and the blue line represents, up until this year, because we're not, we're only halfway through this year, represents the actual revenues that the city gathered. And as you can see, each year, we have had more revenue than was projected by millions of dollars. And you can also see, based on the CAFR, that the, even though we were told back in 2010, 11, that we were approaching the, when I was on the council then, we were approaching the minimum surplus fund balance. We were certainly close to the maximum fund balance, as you can see right here on 2010, I just wanted to make sure that everyone could see this and see that we have, still have a very robust economy in West Jordan. We still have a very rock-solid surplus fund balance, and we also have a healthy sum in the state treasury, just so that the citizens understand that we are watching their money, and I feel ever confident about where we are with the city at this time. That's the end of my report. Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to throw that out there. I did not use any staff time. It was just, I just went to the CAFR and wrote the numbers down. That's all that was. The only comment I, the only purpose of me presenting the information was that in my mind, I want to see that our expenses don't exceed our income. And so, to me, it was a message to the council and additionally to the city manager as he prepares his budget, that that's what I want to see. And I absolutely concede that our revenues are, are exceeding what we're projecting. That's a good thing. That's a sign of a good economy, and I'm very happy about that. But for me, I want to approach it cautiously. I don't want to project too much because when I was on the council just a few years ago, that wasn't the case. We ran a declining sales tax revenue where every year it was the other way around. And so, just for me, I want to present that information, or again, for us and for the city manager, to see how important it is for me to have those two in sync, that our, that our expenditures are not exceeding our income, that they're closely in balance. I, I mean, I absolutely concede that we have leftover money every year and it's due to a lot of things. It's due to internal savings, to turnover, to increase revenue, due to sales tax figures that are great, and those are good things. And I don't, I don't want to see those things go away. But for me, it was just, it was just a, I hope I didn't frighten anybody by showing those, but it was purely just to say, hey, these are issues for me that are, that are just not in sync, and I'd like to see it more in sync, specifically in this budget year. Let's try to bring it back so it's, so that our expenses match. And maybe what it is, is maybe in, in past practice, maybe our, the budgets we've been passing, we're just throwing in expenses that were unnecessary, and maybe that's it. Maybe this is our time to rein that in. Anyway, thank you.
No, and I just want to point out, and I appreciate that, I did have several calls concerned about that we were, the new projects that we're talking about, that we were deficit spending on and on, and so I wanted to make sure that the citizens understand that we're not, we're not actually doing that in real terms. This comes just as the revenues, this doesn't have cost savings added to it. I think that yours took in all accounts. This only has the basics on it, so I appreciate you bringing that because it was an eye-opener to me as well, and so I had to dig into the archive. The clerks were nice enough to pull the information out of the iCard, iArt, iSfor me, so I just wanted to present it so everyone could see it, but, so thank you. Councilmember Haga.
Just that direction from the staff, you know, I, I only can relate to three of these bars, but the first year that I was elected, you know, we had, we were like $19 million, which was over the 25% fund balance, and I'd like to just make sure that we at least make sure that we're below the fund balance and that we're utilizing all the tax revenues from the residents to progress the city. So just a comment, because that graph kind of shows our savings, as we call it, as a fund balance is kind of high, so I challenge our new city manager to get that in line too. Thanks, Mayor.
Thanks. Motion to adjourn will be in order.
I will read adjourn.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Burton and a second by Councilmember Haga. Discussion. Councilmember Nichols.
One comment, I just, I wanted to throw it in there. Today, so noticeable, no closed session, I had a waterboard meeting, it was fantastic. Thank you very much.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.